Okay, it is 6:05. Prior to our special meeting, we are going to have a brief workshop. And I would ask that everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we really only have two items to discuss in workshop. And the first is school board calendar. So we have talked about this for years and years and years. And this is just, it's just a draft, it's just a first step to get us started. For the past few years, due to COVID, we have been so reactive to everything. It's time that we start being proactive and meeting on a regular basis and setting goals. And, and getting to the work that needs to be done. So you can all just take a peek at this if you would like. Again, this is just a brief draft. I would prefer that everyone take this back to their committees and just have a conversation about the best dates and times that would work for everyone.
I think this is fantastic to finally, to finally have it on paper because it's so easy to say, let's have a regular meeting, let's have a regular meeting. And we did for a little bit, but things got crazy and I think this is
COVID.
Yep.
Yep.
And this is getting everybody on to eventually the same page so that there's not a question of is there a committee meeting this week?
With a standing structure and if for some reason something's canceled, then it would be clear that it's canceled. And we can put them right on that calendar that way with a link. It'll make it much easier if there's a meeting, then the agenda's supposed to break down, link.
Yep. And you can see that I just filled this out through November because we will have, have new board members after November and these times may not work for them, but that is, that's what we're up for now, so.
Here we are.
Awesome.
Nice, the first thing on there, August 29th, first day, first staff day breakfast. Is everybody able to come, ready to go for that?
I may not be able to make it, but I'm gonna try my best.
No problem.
Yes, looking forward to seeing you. I will be there for sure. Beth, Tara?
I believe so.
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, that's great. Wonderful.
Very good.
And the only other item for workshop discussion was, we don't have a social media policy for board members. And I think it's important that we develop one. I'm not on the policy council, but this is a draft from another school that Katrina has found for us. And also, Beth, I know you are policy, so I'm gonna hand this over to you. This is social media guidelines for school board members that I found. It's from the Texas Association of School Boards, but I thought it was, provided some really good information. I think that some of the key points that we need to make clear in a policy is that we need to make sure that when we are using social media, we are communicating as an individual and not as a board member. We need to avoid posting content indicating that members have made a decision about how they feel about items. And we need to make sure that community input is received through the appropriate channels, not through Facebook posts, so.
Awesome. Okay, I see that we have a potentially scheduled meeting on September 6th. So between then and now, I will look through this and these here. I may even do some additional research as well so that we have some points to discuss.
Okay.
Because I think that that's, I agree with you, I think it's really important because we are, we are in uncharted waters, so to speak, in dealing with things that people didn't deal with in the past. And we're also, you know, the expectations of privacy are very different now with social media. And so, yeah, I think that it's really important that we have something that we're, we're looking to.
Does Maine School Management have a template for this policy?
I'm sure they do, Paul. I haven't reached out to Steve, but that might be something for
Yes, I had reached out to Steve in regards to another possible policy that we were working on too, so I'll follow up to that email and ask about this too.
I believe this is based on a NSBA policy boiler template that some other districts are used, but I'll be happy to send it to MSBA and ask them as well, Steve, to vet this. See if there's any suggestions that they have additionally.
Thank you.
And if they're legal, we should.
Yep.
Yes, for sure.
So again, just a draft for, you know, for some ideas of some of the pieces that should be covered in there. Making it clear that if you're, you know, if you're posting on social media, it needs to be clear that it's your own opinion and not the opinion of the board because we only speak as the board when we're aboard.
That is right. And another thing that has come from legal in the past is that we should not have individual Facebook pages such as Kelly McKinney, Elsworth School Board. If we have an Elsworth School Board Facebook page, it should just be one and there should be one designated person that posts to that. Just something else I'd like to consider when you guys are working on the policy.
Along those lines, so I actually do have it, Paul Mercosin, Elsworth Facebook.
We all do, we all do.
Well, I created it in early 2014 when I, when I was running for a school board for the first time.
Yeah.
And so it's mostly, it just lies dormant. And then every three years, it's like, it's like cicadas, you know, it come out. And then I posted a lot on it when I was first running the first time. And I've done a little bit in the two times I ran for reelection since then. And so, but now that we're in another election cycle, I would wanna really be careful about.
So Melissa did say that's okay. She's like, I understand that people use those pages when they're running for election, but once they're elected, like, information should not be going out through those channels.
Yeah, because I think that's the only way that you can boost or sponsor a Facebook ad is through a page, like you can't do it on a private.
And when, and when someone has sent a message to that page, I always, my reply is please email me at pmercosin@elswarschools.org.
Yeah.
And that way it's in the right place.
I created a page when I was running too, and I couldn't figure out how to change the name, so I haven't been up since. It's like, I'm not even gonna.
It's still there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Okay, so that's all I have for workshop items. Does anyone have anything they need to add? Okay, all right, so we will move on to our regular special meeting agenda. I'm going, item C, adjustments.
Do you have to call the meeting order?
I think you are right. Calling the meeting to order 6:14.
Yeah, I have 6:13.
You're so picky, Paul.
6:13 and 32 seconds.
I have 6:13 to say.
Okay, 6:13 it is.
Have a big fight about it.
Yeah, I know, right?
We can discuss it until it's 6:14.
Such glee.
Item C, adjustments in the agenda.
There is one adjustment for your consideration, if you so wish. We would like to add an adjustment for the nomination of a auto teacher at Hancock County Technical Center, which would move, that would add E2 and remember everything else to E3 through E6.
I move that we adjust the agenda by adding consideration of teacher nomination to E2 and renumbering E3 through E6 accordingly.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item D, public participation. Seeing none, we will move on to item E, new business.
Okay, so we do have, for your consideration tonight, the personnel committee has met and has approved the following votes for nominations and we would need your consent and recognition of those actions. Stephanie McGruder as the instructional coach with a first year probationary contract for the FY '23 school year. Victoria Van Trump as a sixth grade teacher at EEMS with a first year probationary contract. Tessa Byard, science teacher at EHS, first year probationary contract as well. And Christina Gee as a 504 coordinator, first year probationary.
Do you have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to acknowledge the personnel's action on behalf of the board in confirming the superintendent's nominations as follows. Stephanie McGruder as instructional coach with a first year probationary contract for 2022-23. Victoria Van Trump, a sixth grade teacher at EEMS with a first year probationary contract for '22-23 school year. Tessa Byard as science teacher at EHS with a first year probationary contract for 2022-23. And Christina Gee as 504 coordinator with a first year probationary contract for 2022-23 school year.
Second, I'll second your motion. Any discussion?
Just that it's very exciting to see all of those.
Yeah. Yeah, we went from wondering how are we gonna fill these positions and all of a sudden we got some great candidates.
Yes.
I think we have two openings left, just two, right? One hopefully potentially to be, have a candidate for you here shortly, so. Get in there.
Awesome.
Still looking for special education teachers, looking to join a great team, so if you're said person and you're watching, give us an application, please.
All those in favor? Thank you. Item two, consideration of teacher nomination.
Yes, Richard Jamison. And he is our candidate for an automotive instructor at Hancock County Technical Center for year probationary. That was a great thing to have a job via, that was very successful. I should mention there's also an online job fair tonight as well, so.
Up a motion.
I move to confirm the superintendent's nomination of Richard Jamison as automotive instructor at Hancock County Technical Center with a first year probationary contract for the 2022-23 school year.
I'll second that. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Great. Item three, discussion and consideration of equipment purchase bids.
Yes, so we budgeted for new wrestling mats this year and we have quotes. I believe they actually went up to bid a second time. The preferred vendor is Dolomer, but the bid, the lowest we could get is $11,470. And we budgeted $10,000. So fortunately, the boosters in collaboration with the school department have agreed to pay that difference. So we would ask for your approval of this, that we can get it ordered. There is quite a lead time of 14 to 18 weeks for delivery, so.
It can be close.
It'd be very close, so.
Yeah, and I, and I do just, the reason why it had to go back for bid a second time was again because of the delay in passing the budget. And so those, those quotes had expired, so we had to get new ones. So it's, we're lucky that it had only increased that much because as we saw at our last meeting, there were some things that increased by much more than that, so.
Much more, yes.
And this is the EHS All Sports Boosters that came up with the additional funds.
I believe that's correct, yes. Yes, that's correct. Very fortunate to have such great groups that partner with us.
This might be a good time to note that I've noticed a couple of fundraising appeals from EHS All Sports Boosters in recent days. And in fact, this afternoon, I purchased some spirit wear from the website, so I think the deadline for that is September 7th, is that correct? Yeah, so you, you go follow the link that you can find on the booster's Facebook page or by emailing somebody, you know, there's a lot of people who can direct you that way. And then you purchase it with a credit card and then it's all gonna get shipped all at once. All the orders will get shipped to the high school, I guess, and then get distributed. So it's a great way to get that spirit wear and be able to wear it with pride at all kinds of events.
Order early for holidays, birthdays.
But we've only got a couple of weeks left to do it, so act quickly. Yeah, and then there's also, people are selling those, what are they?
Eagle soccer cards.
Eagle soccer cards, and I'm sure there's other fundraisers going on too, so be on the lookout.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the bid from Dolomer Sport Surfaces for wrestling mats as presented and recommended by the facilities committee.
Second, I'll second your motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, discussion of return to school plans, okay.
So I'm going to call on Assistant, Acting Assistant Superintendent Engles to come up and talk a little bit about this. Very positive document that you have.
Yes. So first, Joe Merrill, our Elsworth Elementary Middle School nurse is here. So when I'm done, if you have specific questions for the nurses, he's happy to answer them. He and Michelle Osborne worked really hard this summer to make sure they kept up to date on what the CDC recommendations were from the state and from the federal government. The state of Maine has come out and said there is no longer standard operating procedures that the state will put out with response to COVID, that they were going to adopt the federal CDC guidelines. So having said that, Joe and Michelle went through both the federal CDC guidelines and the Maine state guidelines that they have put out and came up with an easy front-to-back document that we can send out to families over infinite campus to communicate with them. And as I said in the last meeting, the goal is to move more towards endemic stages and having families make more decisions about how they choose to handle the COVID. So first and foremost, we'll continue to use the pre-screening tool. Families can refer to that as a reference to determine whether or not they believe they should keep their child home. So that tool is still the same and it will be up to parents to determine whether or not they feel their child should stay home. I mean, we've always said if a child has a fever or if a child doesn't feel good, they should stay home. That, that still remains the same. One of the biggest things we wanna stress is that some families may still make the choice to wear masks and they will be welcome in the schools and supported in the schools. So any families wishing to send their children to school in masks, that is their choice to do so and they will be supported. The one time that masking will be required is if you test positive for COVID and you choose to return to school day six through 10. So if you test positive for COVID, you are to stay home on that first five days, okay, which has been typical. Day six through 10, you have a choice. You can continue to keep your child home if you don't want them to mask. Or if they return to school, they will need to wear a mask day six through 10. If a student receives two negative COVID tests 48 days apart, they can remove their mask as well before day 11. And so what will happen is if a family reports that a student has tested positive for COVID, the two school nurses will work with that family and help them sort that out because it can be confusing. Another, the two biggest changes probably with positive cases is we are no longer contact tracing, which I know the school nurses and school leadership is relieved by to not have that burden. But contact tracing is no longer required or recommended. And also, moving forward, students are not going to zoom in when they've tested positive and are staying home for COVID. If students are sick, we want them to rest and feel better. So if they feel up to doing schoolwork, they can always access Google Classroom or a parent or child can email their student's teachers. And now that teachers have spent all this time working and uploading things to Google Classroom, students will be able to more seamlessly do that without teachers managing knowing who's allowed to zoom and who's not. So that seems like a reasonable middle ground for that. Also, last year, we began keeping on our website the ESD positive case counter so that families who were nervous or wanted to know the stats, we are, we did make the choice that the nurses were happy to keep that again this year. So families can look at that each week, see where we're at and may make a different choice about masking their child in schools depending on how things are going and the trends. So again, trying to shift things to more family-based decisions. The nurses will have access to testing. And if a student is sick at school and the family would like their child tested and gives their permission, we still will have the ability to do that, but we're not going to require it anymore. It'll be up to the family to determine what they wanna do with regards to that.
Any other big things I'm missing?
Okay, I think that's.
I have a question on behalf of my child. Will there still be assigned lunch seating?
I don't believe so, no.
So it sounds like we're going back to normal.
Due to the age, depends on the age of the child, so.
Yes, not due to COVID.
Lunch seating for your first grader, but not due to COVID.
Right, not due to COVID circumstances, right.
It'll be back to the regular. Yes, I'm seeing.
Yep.
This is exciting. It's been so long.
It has, it's a breath of fresh air. And I really, I can't say enough about Joe and Michelle, your two school nurses. Jackie last year and this summer, Joe and Michelle have worked really hard to keep things manageable, fair for all, protect kids, keep families safe, and find a really good balance between safety and managing their enormous jobs even without COVID that they have in our schools with the numbers they have to deal with. So I really wanna publicly thank the two of them for their work throughout the pandemic and also moving forward as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have one more quick question, Amy. So we'll no longer be, be requiring that students test in the office if they come in with symptoms. What will we be sending them home if they come in with some symptom into the office? So they come into the office, they've got a runny nose and a cough. Are we letting them go back to the classroom without a test or are we sending them home without a test?
I, I think testing is the choice of the parent and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong. If in normal times, the symptoms were severe enough that we would be calling the parent and sending home, that's what we will do. But we, we cannot require and will not require testing anymore.
Right, but we also won't work, we will allow students to go back to the classroom without testing.
Within reason, within reason. I mean, in, even prior to COVID, if a kid was hacking, coughing, fever, like had the symptoms, we'd call and request the child go home regardless. We don't want kids getting sick, whether it's COVID or anything else.
Right.
So if they were showing those symptoms, we would send them home like we always have.
Right, but if it's a kid with like allergy symptoms, little runny nose.
Yes, I trust that our nurses would call the family, talk to the family and make the decision that they think is best. I mean, we're gonna do now the same thing and support families. And so I would expect that it would be a two-way, yeah.
Yay.
How's that? It's up to you if you want to. Do you have a different take?
Do you have a different take?
What's that? So Michelle and I have kind of had a similar conversation. And all the CDC guidelines that have come out are really informing parents, informing guardians and allowing them to make decisions as parents as to what's going on. So if a teacher, staff member sends a kid to my office or Michelle's, if they're not feeling good and want to come see me, we'll evaluate them. If we think it's allergies, because that happens, we're going to use our judgment to say that kid's okay to stay in school. And just like Amy touched on earlier, if the kid's sick, we're going to call the parents and say, I'm not sure what this is. I don't know that it's COVID, not COVID cold, a stomach bug, but we really think you should go, you know, go home, take your kid home till they're feeling better. If they have symptoms that are on that COVID checklist, we're going to say, you know, based on these symptoms, we recommend that you have a test. But we're not going to require that.
It's going to be like it used to be.
Yeah. And that's all in line with what the CDC says now.
Yes. Like where we might have in the past recommended that someone get tested for the flu or for strep.
Exactly.
Yes. And, and the nurses have access to tests. So if a family wants to take us up on the recommendation to test, but needs a support getting a test, we will be able to provide support for that family to do so. So, yeah, it's a good move forward, I think, a good transition and is in complete line with what the fed, federal CDC and the state is recommending. So I feel good about that.
Makes me happy.
Me too.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Balls.
Thank you so much.
All right. Item five, approval of school handbooks.
And those were delivered electronically for your preview and just as in all years, updates to the policies that changed, things of that nature, staff rosters, dates, and you know, principles.
Now, just updated notices, Kenny Vento letters, things like that, those required things were updated.
The big news about hats.
Big news about hats. Yes. So we have the second read of that tonight.
Oh, that's right.
Is it already reflected or will we have to change it?
So for, for us, some have put it in and some were waiting for approval tonight. And because it's in Google Doc, we simply take out the old and put in the new with the adoption date. So it, that's, it's easy. Yes, very easy.
That's right. I forgot we hadn't done the second read of that.
It's coming up next. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the student here in handbooks as presented.
Second that?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. We have the second read of the amended policy JICA dress code.
And just as a reminder, this is just amending the amendment that we made in October to include that students at the high school level will also be allowed to wear hats while still excluding hoodies that might obstruct administrators from being able to see who someone is.
I'm assuming you meant July, not October.
Did we do that in July? No, no, no. I mean, the original, the original, the original amendment.
Oh, okay.
The original amendment in October when we changed all the things with the links and the, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
And teachers can still ask a student to remove their hat in the classroom and that's at the discretion of the teacher.
Yes.
It's good depending on the, depending on the course that could be.
And just to reiterate that that is just at the high school level at this point.
Great. Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the second read and adopt amended policy JICA dress code as recommended by the policy committee.
Second? Any discussion? Thank you to the policy committee for doing this work. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. This brings us to calendar and announcements. Our next school board meeting will be Tuesday, September 13th, 6 o'clock here in council chambers. Our next workshop is August 27th here in council chambers at 6:00. The first day of school for K through nine is Wednesday, October 31st. And the first day of school for K through 12 is September 1st. We're excited to see everyone back.
Hold on. Tuesday, the 27th, Tuesday is not the 27th.
No, there's a, no, there's no there.
Is that supposed to be September, I think?
I think you are right. Yes. That should be September.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
I was like, wait, that's four days. And I was like, wait, that's not Tuesday.
Nope. There we go. September.
You don't want to spend the last waning days of summer in workshops.
No.
This weekend. Yes.
The rest is correct, right? Yeah. Okay. We're good. All right. That brings us to item L.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All right, dear. I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I show six 34, just want to make sure.
Mine's a six 35.